That goes in adoption of the agenda. Everything's good, still? Motion to adopt the agenda?
I have motion Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Bynum? Any discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye, votes no? So what are donations? Donations? Everybody's been on vacation, hopefully. All right, is there a motion to adopt the minutes from our July 12th meeting? We have a motion from Ms. Bynum, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Meyer? Any discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye, votes no? Mr. Grove, did you have opportunity to review?
I did, and I didn't find any mistakes.
Only like 2%.
It's 2%, right? The bills have just started to arrive.
We're only at 5%.
I like that number.
The consent agenda contains approval of donations, paying the bills. The attendance report and homeschool report, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? We have a motion from Ms. Bynum, is there a second? Second from Mr. Grove, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, votes no? Dr. Grinsley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have our first day of school tomorrow, so as you know, getting ready for the first day of school is always quite a flurry of activity, so we have had that, so I thought I'd share just a few of the back-to-school events update that we do every year, just to share some of the things that we've been up to, including hiring this wonderful group of people that you see before you. Some of them are not new to us, just moved positions and things, but we are one of the very few fully-staffed schools in the Commonwealth, which is pretty amazing with our instruction, so we are very proud of that and very thankful. The new teachers had their orientation on the first and second last week, lots to do, and acclimating new teachers to the community, of course, all that fun hiring, financial paperwork you have to do, and insurance, and time with your principals to go over what you have to do, but then there's fun things too, like lunch with headwaters, and some time with your mentors to visit and just get to know people, so that was wonderful. We had our convocation on August 3rd, talking about the road to remarkable and introducing our new staff, but also to make sure everyone knew that mental health is a major priority. So we had Renee Norden, the Executive Director of the Bakier Mental Health Association, come out and be our keynote speaker, and she was wonderful. She really gave a good overview of the importance of teachers in that road for mental health and becoming mental health first aiders, which is a training that she helped lead in the school as well, so that was great. And then also, she really emphasized the importance of self-care and how important it is to make sure you put your oxygen mask on first, because you can't help others if you're pouring from an empty cup. So it was a great day, and it was awesome to see everybody. Everyone seems very excited to begin the year. But, we did have a lot of professional development to get done. The last couple of years with COVID really derailed a lot of our required trainings, at least in person, to do them the correct way, so of course, we had these onsite professional development trainings. The mental health first aid training is a full-day training to be certified, and many of us were due for that training, other than a small group who had completed in February, so we had to get everybody trained. So we are all mental health first aiders once again, and we're caught up in a great day of training. We had some school safety training with our SROs, so we're prepared for that. We did move Alice training to further in September, just because of the timing and getting our instructors the day before school, that's a bit too much to throw at everybody, so we moved that, and they did a great job today, just as a nice introductory to what we will be experiencing, school safety, the relationship between SROs and school staff, it was a really good modification. We went through health protocols, and then there were some online professional development modules that had to be completed too, so we tried to get these out as early as possible in July, for those who wanted to get a head start, you didn't have to, it was not an obligation, but many people did. So those are the things, like we did have Alice online modules, Title IX and mandatory reporter training, your handbook, there's a lot of changes in the handbook every year, culturally responsive teaching, our new talent ed platform, mental health first aid also had an online portion, so there's a lot to do, but I feel so proud of the staff for accomplishing all this training, on top of getting ready for last night, meet the teacher, and ready for tomorrow, and we know it was so much to throw at them, but to be a remarkable staff and be ready for these kids this year, we had to make sure we're top-notch, so we're all caught up on our trainings. We did have a meet-the-teacher day yesterday, from 1:00 to 4:00 and 5:00 to 7:00. It was so awesome to see everybody and get back in, the kids were so excited, and when I brought my children down to the elementary, I swear, just about everybody was there. It was so packed, and everyone was seeing their teachers and seemed to be very excited, so that was, it was wonderful. Teachers seemed, I can't, I don't know how they did it, but they were super ready, the rooms looked fantastic. And then finally, just communications, we have changed our newsletters and bulletins to this new online format, based on feedback from parents, so the mobile version looks really nice too, when you bring it up, so all of our communications that we used to do, like with our bulletins and newsletters, will now be sent via link through your email, and it's a click, and it's nice and easy to use on your mobile device, so that was feedback from our parent group, that that's the best way probably to get those things to them, that they will read lots of papers, going home in book bags, get lost, so we're...
Do you think 100% have email?
Most of them do, in Power School, very, very few do not, so that was feedback from them, to say that this is probably the best way to get it to us, but if they don't, they can certainly say we'd like to get printout versions of things, and we do have some families that we send home packets for, but we also have our new Parent U site on there, that will have templates, I mean tutorials, video tutorials for parents on areas of interest or areas of things that we want to get some information across, like the free and reduced meal applications and how vital that is to get those in, especially this year with meal prices kicking back in after a two-year break, so that's really, really important, but something important to realize is that even reduced meal eligible students will receive free meals through the new waiver, so they still have expanded it a little bit, but it's still vital that we get those applications in.
So is there, I'll interrupt if...
That's okay.
Is there a grace period for that? I mean, are we just, kids that had free and reduced lunch last year, they're going to get their lunches for a week or two weeks?
Yeah, there's an annual update process, but the cafeteria managers will look at that and see when the enrollment period, there is a grace period, you can apply anytime throughout the year.
Right, but there's a grace period at the beginning of the year.
Yes, yes. All right, and that concludes my back-to-school update, any questions?
I did access it from my phone since I was traveling, and it does look a lot better, so I really appreciate that work that was done.
Excellent. All right, so our next item on the agenda is 4.2, summer programs. We have been so busy this summer with so many things going on, so we thought we'd highlight just a couple of those, so first, I'd like to bring up Ms. Jenny Capsa to talk about the terrific Thursday program and Fun in the Sun.
Jenny, can you grab that mic?
Yes.
And make sure that we're... There are people online that are... You got, it's a lot to handle. Thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, so I'm going to really focus on the day camp program, so if you want to give me my teaser about the Pathways Academy, because it was... The Pathways Academy was a program that was created in partnership between us. With the opportunity to experience a lot of different life skill workshops and activities, so these students had to apply, they had to interview, they were then selected, there were 21 of them that participated, and throughout June, on Monday, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, we met, and the students participated in 29 different workshops or activities. It was a wonderful program, we've got a few students here who are going to tell you a little bit about that briefly in a few minutes. The students also had to participate in a shattering experience, and they also had to find a person that would kind of mentor them and talk to them about their path forward, whatever would be coming next for them after high school, so that's my little teaser about that one. So now, so that was in June, that was Monday, Tuesdays, Wednesdays in June. On Thursdays in June, we led the terrific Thursday day camp, and the terrific Thursday day camp, the idea of this program was to be an incentive program for summer school students, so it was originally offered only to summer school students, we'd see how many we would get, we found that we had a few more spots to fill, so we were able to open it up to others in the community. I think we had 67 campers register for this program and 42 camp counselors, and I will say that this program is not just for campers, it really is also for the camp counselors, everybody benefits from participating in this kind of activity. So the program took place on Thursdays in June, with the idea being that the summer school students, as long as they participated in two of the three days of summer school, then if they registered to participate in terrific Thursdays, then they could come and have this really fun program every Thursday, so we had a great turnout. The kids, it was all free for them, lunches, snacks were provided, all program supplies were provided, they would show up at Gray's Mountain Lodge every morning at 9:00 a.m. on a Thursday, we would sing a bunch of songs, we could divide them into their groups, and they would participate in two morning workshops, and then in the afternoon, after lunch, we all went to the swimming pool, and then at 3:00 they went home. I mean, it was just fun, it was just a really fun event, something for people to look forward to. I did ask parents for feedback from the terrific Thursday, I just want to just read a little bit just about what people said. 90% of those who completed the feedback survey felt that this program was a good incentive for summer school students, and parents said, "My daughter looked forward to this program each week, it was a great way for her to stay motivated in summer school and keep in touch with friends." Another parent said, "It gives the students something to look forward to at the end of that week's school, it was a fun incentive." And another parent said, "It took their mind off of whatever stress they might be having." So I think it was really successful, I think it did exactly what the intention was. So that was June. And then in July, we ran the Fun in the Sun day camp. The Fun in the Sun day camp, this was a brand-new program for us, and this day camp was in many ways similar to the terrific Thursday day camp, in that it was free, bussing was provided, snacks, program supplies were provided, it was held at Gray's Mountain Lodge three days, but there were a lot of differences too, so the Fun in the Sun day camp, every week it was a four-day program, and it was offered for three weeks, so that was 12 days in total, which meant that the relationships between the campers and the counselors was rich, it was a very rich program, which is important, I believe it's very important. And there are a few more differences, the kids got to pick their workshops, unlike terrific Thursday, where they just kind of went through each one every single Thursday, the Fun in the Sun, they got to pick what they were doing, which meant that you had kids in a workshop based on interest and not just on age, so then you had older kids mentoring younger kids at every workshop, they were super happy. We also partnered with RAC, RAC was lovely, and they offered to pay three local artists to lead workshops at this camp, so we had two people leading art workshops and another one who came out to lead a dance workshop, and then they also paid for assistance, so some of our camp counselors were able to earn a little bit of extra money being assistants. This program had 97 kids register and another 43 camp counselors. Now those camp counselors all had to apply, they all had to attend meetings at the school, they all had to attend a day-long training, and they were paid based on the amount of responsibility they had. So counselors and training, those were our, they're going to be eighth graders tomorrow, and they were paid $25 a day, then we had our camp counselors who were paid a little bit more, we had our lead counselors who were paid a little bit more, and then we had counselors who actually led some workshops who were even paid a little bit more. So this was a good summer employment opportunity for people, and it was just a very happy place to be. I think the feedback we got, and I'm going to read you a little bit about that in just a minute here, was phenomenal. The workshops were great and interesting, with a lot of variety, and again, we swim in the pool every afternoon. One of the big differences was that this four-day-a-week camp, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays, was held at Gray's Mountain Lodge, but Thursdays, it was a field trip day, so every Thursday, Lacey Jenkins here, she directed that ship, and she took kids to various places in the nearby community, so the kids went to Skyline Drive, they heard about falcon migration and bears and went hiking, they went to the Luray Zoo, they went out to Flat Sea's Ice Cream and to a local park, they went to Luray Caverns, and they had a ball. I mean, we heard from parents all the time about how their kids are just, they're falling asleep on the buses, you know, really? So it was very, very, very successful, and I'm very thankful for the opportunity to have had this program, because I think it was important. And again, I did ask for parent feedback, and I am going to read you a little bit about what parents said, but I just want to give you my feedback about this, because for me, the Fun in the Sun day camp was really important, I think it provided social and emotional wellness to our kids, and it really let these kids know that they mattered and that they belonged, and it's because of the time that we were able to have with them and the relationships that they were able to form. You know, our counselors would show up and greet these kids off the buses, and supervise them, and play with them, and eat with them, and dance with them, and swim with them, and really have a real strong relationship with them, and let these campers know, "I care about you, you know, you belong here, you matter," and it filled these campers up, and then the campers, when they saw the counselors, would run to them with joy and excitement, which of course would fill the counselor up. Everybody felt loved, everybody felt like they belonged. I feel like this every time I talk about camps, but I can't help it, it's just really true, I just think it's, I just think it's so important, I think it's so important, I think it's important for everybody who participated in this partner. Okay, so, I feel like this every time. Okay, but I am going to read you what parents said too, quickly here. "The camp being free and having transportation made it accessible for our family, and honestly helped with child care during the summer months too." Another parent said, "I was so thankful that my children were outside playing all summer away from electronics and springtime. I was also grateful that my teenager was employed, building her resume, learning real-life employable skills. Additionally, these camps made it super easy of working parents like myself. Enrollment was online, I didn't have to pay, I didn't have to worry about packing lunches, and transportation was a breeze. Thank you for providing this amazing opportunity for our school community." There are two more. "This program absolutely matters, especially after coming off another year where children were somewhat still, I'm sorry, were still somewhat isolated, this seems to give back a little normalcy. I actually had to explain what a normal year looks like, because our first grader had never experienced a normal year. This program is so important for continued social and emotional development. We have to capture that side before they can successfully be taught academics. In closing, I could not say thank you enough to the talented staff and group of teens. They certainly have a vision that puts children's best interests at heart, the children feel love and respect. I'm such a baby! As a parent, I feel they're safe and cared for in a most professional way. I feel children have created memories at this camp that will last a lifetime, thank you." And the last one, "We love this camp opportunity that's offered through our ZPS. As a teacher and parent, I've seen firsthand the devastation this pandemic has caused with regard to the social, emotional well-being of our children. This camp is crucial to closing this gap. I was honored to be able to help chaperone and field trips, and it was a pure joy to see the impact this camp has. Students and counselors singing, laughing, smiling, the wonderful oohs and ahs when they saw new things, whatever is needed to ensure the continuation of this incredible treasure, I'm willing to do. Thank you." That was nice feedback.
Incredible treasure.
I know, it's incredible treasure. So speaking of incredible treasures, there are three people who are going to speak very, very briefly to you, they're just going to tell you their favorite parts of these programs. One is Barrett Jenkins, who is a camper, who came to both terrific Thursday and Fun in the Sun, and he's going to tell you what he liked most about being a camper at these camps. Are you ready? Come on up. Show what you got, Jen.
You have to sneak into my microphone.
Yes, yeah, stand up there.
Hold it up close, Barrett. There you go.
There you go.
What did you like most about the camp?
Humor exploration.
And what did you bring with you? What did you want to show?
A frog.
What is that?
To be a kite rock.
Nice, and three my decorations. What was your second favorite?
Did you write yours?
Smoothie making.
Smoothie making.
Oh, yeah, oh, we had a lot of good workshops, I got to tell you. Well, very good, so you had a good time at camp?
Yes.
Thank you, Barrett, you're awesome, oh, Barrett. And then next, we had two of our amazing teenagers who are seniors tomorrow, who have participated in all three of these programs, in the Pathways Academy, as well as the two summer camps, as lead counselors, and they were just amazing. So Liberty, do you want to come up and just tell us quickly what you liked the most and why they mattered to you?
Hi, you guys, I'm Liberty Sell, as Jenny said, I'll be a senior tomorrow, it's crazy to think about. I have been doing camps with Jenny since I started, I wouldn't be coming back if it didn't matter. I absolutely love all the kids, I know them all just by my name. Hey, what's up? How's it going? I greet them every morning, it's, there's a handful of us who go and we do drive to Graves or the location, and then the rest of them, they do ride the bus, and so bussing is extremely important. I absolutely love the kids, I like, I go, I can go on and on about how much they mean to me, they, they are the reason why I keep coming back. I went and I fulfilled the dance program this last week of camp, the instructor was unfortunately sick, and so Jenny was like, "Hey, you want to come and, can you do this?" I was like, I was like, "Yeah, I'd love to." I had, I had so much fun, I, the kids were going and begging me to go, and, "Hey, a snack, can I, can I come up and dance? Yeah, sure, give me a song, what do you want to play?" So they'd come, they'd line up, we'd be, Jenny would have to be like, "Okay, you guys, it's time for the next workshop," because all they wanted to do was go and have fun. It rained a couple of days, the kids were going and doing Macarena in the rain, like, I'm telling you, it was, it was truly an amazing experience. And then we have Pathways, and, oh my gosh, from day one, the interviews to just get into the Pathways Academy was extremely beneficial, because I had to go and I had to sit there in front of four people, I was like, "Okay, I got this, I can do this," went and shook hands, everything, and it helped them realize that I can do anything, just about anything I put my mind to it. I have to go and I have to put my mind to it and say, "I got this," and just those little steps and with that itself, I can go, and I know I can take on the world.
Yeah, and then we have your amazing Emma thing, this is... Emma ended up leading our sports workshop, even though she didn't play on that ball from the...
Like, yes. Hello, oh, sorry, hello, everyone, my name is Emma Jenkins, and I'm going to be a senior tomorrow too, kind of sad about it, but also excited. I'm going to start with Pathways. Sorry, I'm a little bit nervous. Okay, so beginning on day one, it was just so supportive, and we just had an entire positive atmosphere every single day. I was beyond excited to be a part of a program that seemed to have a section for every single one of my many post-high school worries, so I was like, just beyond excited to be a part of that, and I can definitely say that I left with so much more information and a lot less worried than when I started. Moving on to Fun in the Sun, Intimate Thursdays, I obviously love working with the kids, I mean, that's amazing, I've always loved it and I always will love it, it makes my heart happy, just like, I'm thinking about it, Jenny's coming, boom, you tend to, but, so I made obviously friends with them and love them so much, but one of my favorite things was bonding with the counselors and seeing us all grow together and just become leaders and taking on your responsibility, and just being there for each other was really, really cool. I may have not had that relationship with some of the counselors if I didn't do the programs, and so just seeing everybody go together just also really makes me happy. So it's hard to put into words how much support that has meant to me, but I can say that I have a lot more leadership skills, a lot more confidence in my abilities, and I have felt firsthand the support from between Jenny and Lacey and just the community from Pathways has all been so amazing, and I have made memories that I will say with me forever and learn things that will say with me through college and life after that, so I just don't think anything for that.
That's great.
All right, I know we've surpassed 33 minutes here, it's already...
Yeah, Jen, it seems like a simple thing, right? But it's a world-changing thing.
Oh, it is, I, yes, I believe that, with all my heart, I know that. It's what we need, we need to have relationships, we need to have mentoring, we need to have people know that they are loved and cared for, that they matter, that they matter, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you for everything. You might have any questions? We let her go without answering very quick.
I had some, I had some. Programs like this don't happen overnight, and it takes people like I have to...
So what do we do as a school board to keep it going?
I think as long as Dr. Grinsley says that's okay.
Okay.
But seriously, yeah, I just think it's so important.
It's so important.
It's so important.
It is so important.
It just matters so much.
You just need to figure out, what is it that we can do as a group, as a community, to help improve it in any way possible, to make it easier?
Right.
We need to answer that, we want to...
Yeah, we need to make...
It's wonderful.
It needs to continue, that's for sure.
Well, there are those things that we created in the mess that was COVID, that forced us to really look at some challenges a lot differently, that being said, we did have a lot more fiscal resources that were available to us that will not be there the following year, so as we go through our budget development processes and work together to determine and prioritize what we learned and what was the most important, the summer programs were certainly among those top-tier programs that we found that were so vitally important for our students and families here, so we'll have to look at that in the hope of avoiding a fiscal cliff that we, I'd love to do all the things we did during campus, but we'll just have to watch that too.
Yeah, so we'll keep our eye out for other, other avenues of funding for one thing, but we're down there.
We have to do the funding master.
Yeah, so...
Grant, grant, right, grant.
Thank you all.
One more thing, the two seniors, you know, I noticed coming in that the fence out front, it still has a 22 on it, and you need to change that tonight. Don't you think?
We got, we got a couple of leaders sitting right in our crowd here, senior.
I hope I see up three when I leave.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jen, appreciate the time.
Great.
So we're not done with summer programs, we had more going on, so I'm going to invite Beth Sealy, who is our Gifted and Talented Coordinator and Instructional Technology Resource Teacher as well, to talk about Summer Quest, which is also another really great program.
All right, so I am happy to tell you about Summer Quest. Summer Quest is a summer regional governor's school program for middle school students. We partner with Bakier County, Culpeper County, and Orange County to send our students to this two-week program, it's open to any student who's been identified as gifted and talented, rising sixth through eighth grade. This year, we had, okay, this year we had, okay, so, I apologize. All right, let's get myself together. Okay, so, the students that go are able to sign up for classes based on their interest, there are five different choices, and they could major in art, history, drama, science, or writing. Uh, there are five different choices and they could major in art, history, drama, science, or writing. This past year, uh, this summer, we had five of our elementary students attend. That's actually how many slots Rappahannock is allotted. So we did fill all of our slots this year. We had two rising sixth graders attend and three rising seventh graders. We also have a high school student who attended as a middle school student and for the past two years has gone back to help out as an intern for the program. We have fortunately in Rappahannock been able to cover the full cost of this program for our students while most other counties do ask the families to pay a percentage of Rappahannock. We've covered the full cost, which I think is a great thing for our, our kids and our families. Um, so at the program, in addition to their classes, they have daily challenges and icebreakers. You can see a couple of pictures here of some things that our students did, some bonding activities, some critical thinking activities. These pictures are from the drama class. Their project this year was to write the script for a play. They made costumes, sets, props, and then performed the play at the parent ceremony at the end of the two weeks. We also had a couple of students participate in the history class. And, um, in this class, they learned about the space race. And in particular, they learned about people who were important in getting people into space and beyond. Our art students made some really cool projects. Um, this one, the giraffe was made by one of our students and, um, kind of to represent Han Solo in the carbonite. I should have started by saying the theme was a galaxy far, far away this year. That might be why the space stuff is a little more. But, um, you can see our Isaac, our high school student who helped out as an intern. He helped with the science class this year and is a, yeah, big fan of the program and a big help to the students there. They are able to take a field trip during the two weeks. This year, they went to cosmic bowling. And at the end of the two weeks, all parents were invited to come out for a presentation to see what the students did. Uh, the play was presented, the history class went through a, um, March Madness-style bracket, trying to come up with the one most important figure in space exploration. The art students had a great, uh, display board up of all of the work they'd created during the lead. And at the end of the ceremony, we even had some of our students recognized with the Golden Yoda Award, including our own Rose Grimsley, who won the Golden Yoda Award as the most enthusiastic and kind participant in the drama class. And, um, so that's a picture of the entire group with their Yoda ears and t-shirts. All right. So any questions about Summer Quest?
You have a theme for us here?
Once upon a time. Yes, we're going to fairy tales next year.
This was held in, uh?
It was held at Emerald Hill in Culpeper.
It's fantastic. And as a parent of a child that attended, I can say that it just did so much for my child. And we know much about gifted, talented students. They are their own kind of breed of students that need additional support. I always used to call it kind of specialized in reverse because there are so many things to extend that learning. And, um, it was so awesome. I shared with Beth that the first day Rosie came back, she's like, oh my gosh, mommy, there are kids like me. I'm like, there are? Oh, my gosh. Watch out there.
And I have to say, that's why these upper school programs are so important for our gifted students just to see that there are other students with those same passions and intensities.
Yeah, intensities. That's a great word.
I love that.
You know, it's interesting and as a son, I should probably tell you about this. But where I work, uh, I had worked with a group of fifty scientists. And this past summer, we actually created something which we, is the Yoda Award. And we, and they strive so diligently to be the next president of the Yoda. It's a coveted thing. So in a group of gifted people managing, that's, uh, speaks to that. Correct. So, anyway, interesting and great. And it's two weeks, every day.
Monday through Thursday.
Monday through Thursday.
Monday through Thursday for the two weeks.
And do we, do they catch a bus here or do we, parents have to pick them up or?
Yeah, we had a van that drove them every day.
Well, I'm going to ask Beth to stay right there.
Yeah, I was going to go.
Okay. Actually, before we go, there's one thing that they always, I also had kids in that program. One thing that the person who led it for years, I don't know if it's the same woman who leads it.
Yeah, Ms. Coram.
She always does mention that the thing that parents always say is it would be great if it could be five days a week. It would be great if it was two whole. And it, and she points out that this program has had level funding throughout its entire history and it's beloved by so many. And I don't know if there's something, I mean, we're tiny, I know, but it seems like everything, we know that costs go up for everything else. And I would love to see a way that we could, you know, if we could write a letter as a board or something, because it's something that benefited our, especially being such a small school and we have a prerogative to lift up those kids. Um, I don't know if there's like, I would love it if there was a way that we could put, um, some voice behind.
A unified voice.
You know, a unified voice behind supporting.
There is actually going to be a new director next year. Uh, Mrs. Coram had announced after the conclusion of the program this year that it would be her last year as director. So I'm not sure what changes might be on the horizon.
Yeah, but just let us know if there's a way we can support, you know, a inflationary increase and, you know, maybe making up for a little bit of inflationary difference because it is important, you know, and underserved, especially with COVID. You know, some of the kids who got left behind are also people who were, you know, kind of pushed ahead intellectually when they were on their own or with a smaller group. And that's an important group. Rest is served.
Who funds it now?
I'm sorry, could you?
Who funds it now?
Um, it, the, it comes out of the gifted, um, education pool.
So there's funding, match funding for each locality similar to Mount Vista Governor's School for high school students and for summer residential, there's a small amount there. But most of ours, um, all of ours, comes from our local funding to support the full slots for our students. So our students in Rappahannock don't pay anything.
I understand that, but.
Structurally, it's state funding.
It's, it's state funding.
Yeah. So, there's some funding, not, not. I, I know that every year that I was doing it, it was, it's been level funded since it started.
Well, I understand level funding, but, but I guess my point is, who, who has the big ask of the money that starts this?
Is it the parent?
Partner of that?
Well, the, the state, I mean, would fund those. And just like when we ask for additional funding for Mount Vista Governor's School and other slots for gifted programs, they tend to, you know, be lagging, you know, in a lot of ways.
So would we, I mean, I, I agree with you. Would we write a letter to the state, partner of that? And say, you know, this is a very valuable program.
Yeah, we continue our advocacy efforts. And when we do write those things in where we create resolutions, especially when we have those joint resolutions with supervisors during budget development, that wouldn't be a bad thing to add in there that this is an area we want to focus on. I wonder if it's something of the smaller rural schools group could be interested in because we pool our resources at small schools. It's like.
Or, or in conjunction with Culpeper, Bakier, and who else? What are the?
Orange.
Orange. In conjunction with the other schools, so if you do it as a, a, as a group, put something together. I mean, I doubt we'll do it again, but we would try.
I mean, as well, to bring it's work, it's better than not try. And it doesn't take a heck of a lot for this one because it is such a localized, local effort for all of us working together, pooling some resources. Um, you've got your staffing, of course, which is always your bigger ticket item, but materials, programs, and items. But, um, yeah, if we could put together a little bit of a budget, what it would look like in a nominal increase that would support it continually. And then, of course, other, all other districts do have to.
The other districts, um, ask the students to contribute seventy-five dollars.
Okay.
Seventy-five dollars doesn't cover the full cost per student because it's.
Yes, the school, um, takes lion's share, but that's typically the ask of the other districts.
So how many slots does Bakier, is it all on a percentage basis like Mount Vista? Like Bakier might have twenty slots.
Yes.
Yeah.
So they have to come up with twenty.
More money.
More money. Well, they have a lot.
Maybe a good time if there's a new director too, to, to interact with that.
Yeah, the thing that comes to my mind would be something where we drafted a, a resolution with the intent of passing it to the other boards that participate and letting them and then send that.
That like a gap of wait.
Multiple boards that are in multiple voting districts going to all of the reps.
Representing.
Yes.
Then plus the one.
Yeah, but it's taking architecting that resolution.
Yeah, I, I, if you don't, don't ask, you're going to do it.
Well, if we're going to do it, we need to do it now.
Yeah, be a good time.
It'll take that long to get through all of the. Organizing.
Yeah.
The four, but.
Well, speaking of gifted and talented programs, it is that time of year where we need to update our local gifted plan. So Beth has been doing a tremendous amount of work, uh, revamping this plan. She will present it to you tonight.
Okay, so, um, yes, in my, uh, just starting my second year in this role, I got to really dive into the gifted plan, which was probably a good time to do it um, because I've been able to figure out what I can do and what I'd like to see improved. Um, and so with that in mind, I'd like to go through just the highlights of what is in the gifted plan. Um, so we get a template from the state that goes through exactly, you know, what each section is supposed to be. And it starts out with our statement of philosophy and definition of giftedness. Um, these have remained the same in our county. Um, our overall main philosophy is that we want to give individual learning experiences to our gifted students, give them a chance to explore and create and express themselves. Um, our definition of giftedness is that these are the students who are performing or have the potential to perform significantly higher than their peers. We recognize students in, or we identify and service students in general intellectual aptitude and also in, um, visual and performing arts aptitude in visual arts. One thing that I have added to this plan is, um, a third category of giftedness, which is the, uh, performing arts aptitude in theater. And this is to correspond with the, um, rollout in the coming years of our Fine Arts Academy of the high school. So part two is our program goals and objectives. And we do have goals for each of these areas and identification. We want to make sure that our democrat, demographic composition of our gifted population matches that of our school and we are not overlooking our minority populations. Um, delivery of services, we want to ensure that there is rigorous academic coursework for our students. Um, we don't want our students sitting there bored in class, this and that, learning. And the main way that we're doing that is through differentiated instruction. That differentiation is reached through a collaboration with classroom teachers and the gifted education specialist and other school staff. We want to make sure that we have ongoing professional development for our staff in the area of giftedness, understanding how gifted students' needs are met and how they're different from the general population. We want to make sure that we rec, we recognize all of our cultural identities, um, whether they are, you know, are socially, economically disadvantaged students. And also we want to make sure that we have parent and community involvement and we are communicating frequently with our families. So part three is our screening, identification, referral, and service procedures. Screening takes place through three main areas. Um, in grades K through two, we do screening lessons in each of the classrooms four times a year. I, um, as the gifted education specialist, go in and teach a lesson that is designed to bring out those characteristics in students in the PETS curriculum right now, which is primary education thinking skills. As I deliver those lessons, the teachers are encouraged, um, to watch for those characteristics in the students and fill in a checklist as I deliver the lesson. Those students who show up a lot in the screening lessons go into a pool of students who could potentially be identified as gifted. We also, um, have teacher forms that they fill out based on what they observed in the classroom with our students. I created two new forms this year for teachers to do that, focusing on artistic visual arts skills and also the theater skill, uh, the performing arts. We also give the Naglieri Nonverbal Abilities Test in second grade. This is a test with, um, a lot of picture puzzles and have the students use those critical thinking skills and reasoning skills. And it is a great nonverbal way to assess students. So our students who may not be as advanced in language can still be identified for their thinking skills. Um, our referral process comes from our talent pool, which is graded through the screening lessons and Naglieri test, and also from recommendations. Anyone can recommend a student, whether they are a school staff, um, parent, community member, or the student can also self-identify. We had a student do that this past year. Uh, once they're referred, they go through an identification process, which, um, includes testing, checklist, um, a lot of information gathering from different sources so that we can look at the holistic picture of that child. Once that data is gathered, the information is presented to our placement and identification committee at the elementary school, um, or at the high school. Most of our identi, or most of our referrals count at the elementary school level. Um, the committee meets together to discuss the student and decide, uh, what the best placement option for that student is, whether it's in the program or other supports in the classroom. For the visual arts, we do a portfolio for our students. They create a number of art pieces which are evaluated by the art teacher and by our, um, identification and placement committee. For the theater arts identification, I did a lot of research into what other districts and what other places do because, um, there is no one around us who is identifying in theater right now. So I had to actually go to Ohio to find a model for this. And.
Is that a good trip?
The state of Ohio puts out a guide for all of their schools for how they identify students in, um, theater. And so I based the, our plan on that model, which will include, um, both checklists from parents and teachers and also an audition process. Our service procedures, we service our students through differentiation, uh, cluster grouping in classes, which means that we keep our gifted students together so that they have those similar ability peers with them, um, both for ease of differentiation and also for their social emotional needs as our gifted students tend to have different needs than the rest of the population. Uh, we do acceleration when it is narrative. We also have push-in and pull-out classes, which typically are with me, and our governor's school programs. We have Mount Vista Governor's School, our summer regional governor, governor's school, the summer class that I just talked about, and also summer residential governor's school. Okay, so part one is our notification procedures. And this just outlines when and how we notify parents, um, in particular during the evaluation process. We do make sure that we have permission to evaluate our students. We let parents know, uh, what the decision of the committee is and they have the right to appeal that decision if they'd like. We, um, send out information about placement and, um, I think I went through all of this. Okay. So, uh, part five was for change in instructional services. In our district, our students remain eligible. eligible for gifted services throughout their time here. It follows them from year to year. We do not remove students from the program. However, if a student or parent does wish to withdraw from the program, they are able to do that. And yeah, any change in services are decided based on a meeting of school staff and parents. Part six, our evidence of appropriate service options. I touched on these briefly. What we do for our general intellectual aptitude students is the differentiated curriculum, and that means that we are teaching at a different level, teaching different content to these students. Each of our teachers is advised to differentiate and hopefully have had that training at in their teacher preparatory classes, but we also support and give ideas and feedback with the students. Okay, so part seven, program of differentiated curriculum and instruction, because the state recognizes that differentiation is so very important for our students. So to differentiate, we modify process, that is how we learn, product, that is how we show what we learn, and content is what we learn. So those choices could be a compacted curriculum, where we teach what might be learned in a year in the course of a semester. We also have acceleration options, either single subject or entire year. And project-based learning is another big focus in our gifted plan. At the high school level, we offer honors classes, dual enrollment classes, governor's school, and also online classes to Virtual Virginia, and the option for independent study. Okay, so policies and procedures to access programs and advanced courses. These decisions are always made based on what is best for the student, the counselor, and I help to ensure that our students are taking appropriately rigorous classes and that those classes are going to help them in their academic career path and make sure that we are setting these students up for success post-graduation. Our teachers are going to be receiving professional development ongoing throughout the year, and that will take place mostly through presentations at faculty meetings. And we're also looking for, we're encouraging teachers to take classes in gifted education. I would love to see more people endorsed in gifted education in our district. So that's certainly a long-term goal for our county. Part ten asks for procedures for the annual review of effectiveness, and this is done through our gifted academic advisory committee, and they look over the context and design. So making sure that we are identifying the needs of our students and meeting those needs through the programs that we offer. Our inputs, making sure that our program goals are matching what we're doing, our processes, how are we implementing what we say we're going to do, and our outcomes, are our students actually, you know, learning and growing academically. And final section was how we establish our academic advisory committee, and that is a committee of school staff, parents, and community members. It should be representative of our community as a whole and of our gifted population. They are to meet annually to evaluate how the program is doing and to discuss future goals, and we will make sure that all parties are notified through our district website. Okay, that gets me to the end of the plan. I know you'll have questions.
Maybe I missed it, but I find it really important for parents to understand the differences, one might say, of giftedness. And is there any facility for having parent workshops on characteristics of...
Absolutely. One of the things that I am trying to do is when I have information that are offered through, I'm forgetting my acronym, Virginia Gifted Association, they will send out information for parents. I do like to pass that along. I would love to have an information session, meeting session with parents and be able to talk to them a little bit more specifically about our program.
Parent you up.
Choosing a date to get any information out there and making that happen. I found that to be extremely important in my past life.
Yes.
For parents to have an understanding. I've got one of those kids too. You have to know because they're different in a lot of ways.
I think especially with programs at the high school, with our governor's school programs in particular, a lot of parents might not know that these exist and are possible for their children.
It would be worth it if you only had two parents come and then they talked to two more parents and yada, yada, yada. It would be a good thing to do.
I mean, a good model, though. So the reason the parenting model's gonna work is it's the way people learn things today. It's a YouTube video you made or will make, post, and it kind of gets involved.
I had a couple of questions. One was, back when I was a kid, identified gifted, I felt like I was weird. And the program changed its name to Challenge and Enrichment, which made me feel less weird and more celebrated. And I don't know if you ever considered thinking about a different name that might be more, or not, maybe we can easily call it gifted or what the thinking behind it.
I do know a lot of other districts have...
You know, and I'm just curious if that's something that's been in your game.
It isn't something that we have discussed, but I do know that other districts do name their programs differently, so it's not seemingly as exclusionary, you know.
Yeah, because there are times where you feel like, oh, I could use more enrichment in history or in this area or that area at different times. And if we are at virtual point where we have more gifted or whatever the name is endorsed teachers, we could do, you know, a workshop in some area of interest for kids with a particular interest in enrichment in that area. Let me know if that could be, that could be cool. Or I'm just offering a, dive into some history or some other things, so.
Well, bringing up history, this coming year, one of the big focuses for our gifted program is going to be to compete in History Day, which is a national program. And so I'm preparing for this, and it's going to be open not just to our gifted students, but any students who have that strong interest in history. So I've already talked to teachers. It's going to be grades four through twelve.
That's great. Yeah, and then...
Do you know when that's gonna be?
The actual competitions will be in the spring. There's district competition, I believe, is in March, and state competition is typically in June.
Yeah, and then I was just, you mentioned that most people who are identified, what age will people be identified as part of the program? Typically, they consider you do this how, PETS program?
Yes. We will identify in general intellectual aptitude as young as kindergarten. Most of our students, though, will be identified in grades two and up. It is very rare for us to see that shining star emerge as that young age.
And then, so since everybody transitions from the elementary school to the high school, can you talk about that transition? Like, because kids who are maybe doing arts, for example, you know, they're used to getting extra art, and then they have a blocked schedule of coming up in high school, and maybe art doesn't fit in because they're intellectual too, and they're getting ready to apply for governor's school or something. I'm wondering just about that. Like, are teachers in high school, do they know who is in the intellectually gifted track, who's in their...
They do. I do send out that information to them, and Mr. Seward has already asked me to present at the faculty meeting on the seventeenth about what our gifted service options are for the high school school.
That's really good, because that's something we can feel like going out and reflect a little bit.
I also went to eighth grade orientation last night with the intention of presenting those enrichment opportunities, and I kind of got overlooked in the presentation, but...
Yeah, but you can turn it around.
Yeah, we'll circle back and get that.
Because it is like that part, you know, with governor's school, the whole, we just had a big presentation about social emotional learning, and you can feel, I mean, I don't want to, I mean, but you can feel, you can imagine how excluded you might feel from the school community if you arrive at school at 6:30 in the morning, and you're taking a bunch of classes, and then you go to the library, and then you have one class at school. So, and you miss seminars, so you don't get, you have to kind of add that in to your thing. It's hard tricky because it's such a small number of kids, but it is something that gifted kids have those needs as well. And I'm curious, I know that it's, there's only so many hours in a day, all the things, but it's just, I'm curious how, I mean, I know you talked about there being an annual check-in kind of thing. I'd love to get your response to how, I know that it's an area that could be worked on because kids do drop out of governor's school routinely from grappling schools, and that's too bad because I think that they choose a short-term comfort for the trade, it's a trade-off. Because I think we have a lot of kids who, you know, who could handle more than they think they could handle. Because they're used to getting all A's, and then they don't get all A's, and they think they should be getting all B's, just...
Oh, I know. And I'm sure we've even talked about this privately.
On the record, but, you know, but there are kids and their friends, my kids and their friends, have been taking different paths a lot because of short-term versus long-term.
Yeah. I know with, especially with Mountain Vista, we have not had the participation in the program that we would like to see over the past few years, and my goal is really to change that culture, that this is not just for only, you know, these types of kids or only for kids who don't do sports, only for kids who, you know, don't, you know, have a lot to do outside of sports. Show them that this is a program where you're going to find your people, where you're going to find those people who are like you, who have those similar interests. You're going to have top-notch teachers and classes that you would not be able to get at the regular school. And coming out of governor's school, I know our lovely valedictorian this past year also graduated with an associate's degree, thanks to governor's school. So it's an amazing program, and it's really just changing that culture, building it up and making sure that it's something that our students want to do, want to apply to do, and, you know, more applications than we have slots. That's what I'm hoping for.
Yeah, I mean, that's not uncommon for someone to transfer to Raffahannick directly into governor's school. Like, that's why there was the article in the paper, she's only seen the inside of the library, our valedictorian this year, because that was the case, yeah. Because she transferred for this amazing program. So, but it is something to think about, even in terms of, I don't know what, I don't know, I just wanted to mention that as an area to work on, because it's such an amazingly valuable program.
Oh, it is.
Just like, you know, having a rising senior now, you go look at colleges, they say, we want you to do the most rigorous option that's available to you at your home school. So here we are, and we are in a, just from a such a tiny school, we're in a minority population, and it puts us in a good position. So it's, I'd love to encourage people and see it as a really valuable, valuable place. I also feel supported, not just once, not just once as the valedictorian, but like throughout their time.
And that's something we've been talking about quite a bit, too, with the high school principal, who also is gifted and endorsed, which is really helpful, about revamping that high school schedule a little bit to be more inclusive of those who do leave early or have other, and this is going to be important, too, as we roll out these academies and have other things going on. This is a very small group of school that's about to get a lot bigger, and I feel like we are going to have a lot more slots looking at the pool coming up. But also with the Fine Arts Academy and the Trades Academy, once that building is done, we're going to have a whole other group of students also that will be missing the morning, going with Mountain Vista kids over to that building. So it is going to be a growing issue, but of course, we want our students to be very well-connected. We saw this on our gifted advisory board years ago with Handley High School, kind of a very similar thing. They were considering dropping out in Winchester because of that very thing. They just loved their high school so much and loved their culture and their friends, and it was more important to them. They made that, you know, their choice. They were trying to revamp with just a Winchester model to have two years earlier, just so they could have senior year at Handley. And it just didn't really work well with the whole progress we were trying to do. So, yeah, you know, we have to look at all those pieces, but that's something we are looking into, making sure those kids feel connected. Any other questions? Awesome. Thank you so much, Beth.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Ely has done such a great job as our G2.
Asked a lot of you tonight.
Oh, my goodness, yes.
We just crammed them all in one time.
Yeah, and then we find out she has performing arts background as we're rolling out the Fine Arts Academy, which, yeah, we're not tapping into that at all.
I think we are now.
Oh, we totally are. She's even doing an exploratory performing arts class for the middle school, so we're very excited about her. But she came up with the whole, I didn't put that on her. She came up with that and said, whoo, we could do. I'm like, really? Okay, thank you. At this time, we're going to talk briefly about our crisis management plan. This is our annual review that we put on the executive file for you to just review. But please note, we are making some updates, so I've asked Mr. Tupper, who's our crisis management plan leader, to come up and talk about some of that with you.
Good evening, everybody. Nice to be here. I do watch you all on YouTube, believe it or not. You all look great on TV. I can hear you. So I do watch and hear all the things that you're, the questions you guys ask and the things you support. And as normal, our community is special because of you all and your relationship with the board supervisors, and it's all really good. Whatever we decide to do as a community, we can do it. That's the way our community is. So if it's something we want, let's just say we're gonna do it and figure out how, money always comes into the equation. We can make that happen as well. So again, all these wonderful things, and I got to talk about crisis tonight a little bit. Amy has sent you the plan. It's like Dr. Bensley has said, it's not, it's going to be a fluid document. I see in your agenda, you're going to be talking about some communication. You're going to be making with the EMS group. That's great because that's kind of where we've headed after our table's out that we had this summer. And it's good that we're getting everybody more. So what I just want to tell you, a couple of things. Basically, one of the big things that we learned as a group that we needed some more definition in the crisis plan, and that definition right now is the roles and responsibilities. As all of us know, without going into any detail, but current reports that have come out in reference to schools that have had crisis situations, it's been obvious that there were things, simple things that could have been done to prevent some of the tragedies to not be as, I don't know the best word for it, but...
Severe.
Severe, yeah. And that's really the, that's really the nutshell. And so those roles and responsibilities are important because when a crisis occurs, you've got to know who's in charge. And so that, those roles and responsibilities are going to define people in our system, and then it's going to divide, it's going to explain how that incident commander is going to take, who takes control when, and people are going to know. So that's very important because decisions got to be made, you know, it's a crisis, and you got to have your stuff together. So we got to get that in, and we got to practice. Those are things you all are going to help us with. We, what I want you to know is Dr. Bolt's not here tonight, but Dr. Bolt, when the governor said, hey, there's going to be some money now for digitally, digitally mapping our schools, apply for it, let's get it, got right on it, you know, she's a technology guru, got it done. Show me the maps the other day. They're going to be housed in buildings and a couple other locations. It's just a digital map, very clear, concise, our whole campuses are in view. There's not going to be any question. We have a crisis, we're very clear, concise, our whole campuses are in view, there's not gonna be any question, if we have a crisis, we're gonna say it's happening right here, so that's exciting, that, that is done and I, I dare say, we're probably way ahead of every school in particular, which is just the way we are. So, thank you, Dr. Bolt, I know she's not here, but I told her, I said, you need to watch YouTube. You don't have to do that, I said, yeah, I know I don't, but I'm gone. She's, she's a wonderful person, she knows how to get stuff going. So, that being said, with, again, information that we glean from these happenings, uh, there's gonna be, it's always been an effort, but it's gonna be a renewed effort, and one of the biggest things we can do, uh, in our division is we gotta make sure our, our buildings are secure, and how we do that is to make sure our doors are shut and locked all day long, not saying people can't enter, but we're gonna be able to control that, and again, not going into any detail, when you review the reports of other systems that have had crises, that's generally the area that was found to be a problem, I'm not saying it would have prevented necessarily anything, because if somebody wants to do damage to somebody, you can't find a way, but by gosh, we can make sure our doors are shut, we know when something's not working, we've got a person we can call and say we need it fixed, it'll get fixed right away, we're gonna, you know, we've asked staff, both principals and said, they mentioned to their staff, look, you go out of this building, make sure the door is shut, it's locked behind you with anybody, don't assume you hear it click that it's actually shut, checking, our superintendent has said, I want that to be a priority and I want it done and I want it made clear that this is something that has to happen, she doesn't wanna hear, hey, from, from Chris or any SRO or anybody that works in the sheriff's law, I came by the school and three, three doors were jarring, we don't wanna do that, that just can't happen. And again, it doesn't mean that the, the building's gonna be, you know, we're not gonna want public, but we gotta, we gotta supervise those openings, we gotta, we just gotta be vigilant in how we accept the public and it's just, it's just the world we're in. So, everybody agrees with that and everybody's gonna do it, it's gonna be, it's good, I think, we just gotta re-enterate, the door's not working, we gotta let, let her know that they're done and she'll make, like I said, Dr. Bolt will make sure it's fixed. And also, uh, drills, we always, you know, we always know fire drills, you know, drills, but all the drills that we can do to help prepare us for, for these things, fire drills are exactly designed to get out of the building, fire rescue come in and put the fire out, but actually, actually do things with those fire drills, like blocking an exit, so the normal plan doesn't work, you gotta go a different way. So, and all the other drills are gonna, gonna occur, uh, and then, obviously, our people are being trained, safety was, uh, no, Chris did some work with that, uh, did some work with that, the other SROs today, Alice Train will be coming later, uh, it's, it's a necessary, it's a necessary training, it's not a very comfortable training, um, but it's, it's necessary to be prepared, because, uh, when you, when you train enough, and this is the military, I mean, when you're trained enough, the, the motor memory takes over and you, and you just do it. And we've got, uh, we've got a visiting group of teachers, community members, we've got great SROs, um, they take their job seriously, I have no doubt that their, their, their presence makes a big difference, um, and so, we're in good shape, we've, we've gotta save school, we've gotta have a, a good community, but we have to recognize, we just gotta really work on and be vigilant and make sure that our schools are equipped to deal with anything that might come our way, so, that's all I wanna, we go into a lot of detail and snares, but that's not what this meeting is about, I just wanna know, I just want you all to know, appreciate your support, um, and I know going forward, it's gonna be nice working with other members in the community to make us even better as far as safety goes, so, any questions, I'm glad to answer.
Well, and one thing I just wanted to add to what Mr. Tupper said is it's been a great conversation around school safety with our community and since there's been more, um, attention to it, even before Uvalde happened, we were on that track to be, be more collaborative, getting tabletop exercises together and starting to test, for us, we wanted to just test our protocol a little, just to make sure we're on the right track. Then the next level is to involve a whole lot more people in even our drills, using our drills as a learning opportunity for all of us and anyone who might wanna participate, especially with our communications, making sure our radios and comms processes are working and using those not just to train students, as I think was a mentality that we all kinda, let's just train students what to do, but also about, you know, what do we do, and then on all those layers, because typically our drills, required drills in schools are mainly just to make sure our students know what to do, teachers know which exit to use, get out of, you know, um, so if we can enhance those even, to use drills as that training opportunity for all of us to test those protocols, that's something we're changing to, uh, to start this year, just so we can test that at every level and get to a point where practicing a whole lot more.
And, and I, thank you, just one more thing I'd like to add, and that is, it's been a pleasure working with Sean Olster, he, he knows his, he knows his craft and, uh, he's opened, uh, opened our eyes to a lot of things and, uh, he's, uh, I really appreciate how he, uh, kinda brings us all together, so, just a shout out to him, I really enjoyed working with him, thank you.
Any questions? Glad to see you happy.
Yeah.
Well overdue.
If we can include everybody in the process, that would be a really good thing.
Thank you.
One thing I got a lot of trouble with back in the day was the fire drills were a bore, and they hated me for that. I mean, the kid, the kids didn't like it at all, and the teacher, the cafeteria hated me for doing a fire drill at lunchtime, but if you wait till almost everybody's finished, then you do a fire drill, then you're okay, you just have to clean up because they never come back.
Where does everybody go, third period lineup, we already have that plane, so yes, we've done it.
Is that right?
Yes.
Oh, good.
You can't, yes, you gotta try that stuff.
And, and the key thing, like anything we do, you all know, we, we, what we need to do more of, and we will, is after every drill we do, we've gotta debrief after, what, what went right, what, what needs to be improved, what can make it better, we can't, we can't draw up every scenario, we know that, but we can debrief after every drill we do and maybe.
You have to, you have to determine where the, the fault lines were, where, where something didn't go right, because if the drill, you can fix something.
That's right, that's right.
If it's a real thing, it's hard to fix.
And you will run into issues, I'm sure, where you will need financial support to accomplish that mission, if all the doors and, and windows are shut tight as they should be, some classrooms are gonna need that AC, you know, tweaked, maintenance, uh, because students will need that area ventilated somehow and different things to accomplish that, so I would think with our support that we can get that done, if it's a technological thing, the phone system upgrade or something, just for that announcement or whatever, if you all are in agreement, please bring that to the board.
We need to know.
Yeah.
Well, we, we know, for example, like radios, it's ungodly what the, a radio that makes.
Art, yeah.
Yeah, they're, it's amazing, but it is what it is, and so those are the things, those are the things.
But, yeah, I mean, it's, it's gonna cost money, it's, it's, you know, the financial incentive or support versus what you're getting from it, that safety and security, and in light of Uvalde, people have concerns, but then when they come here, you're, we're way ahead of the game on a lot of things, and you're trying, you're pushing, to me, it's money well spent.
We're smart enough to be ahead of the game.
Yes.
Where are we with go bags?
Yes, actually.
Oh, well, thank you, I, you know, I, I'm sorry, I ended on my list, yes.
That's why I'm here.
Excellent, man, when I heard that, I was down there and I, you know, you, you know, when you go to these things, you start thinking about go bags, and then you realize, wait a minute, you can't just be one go bag, we gotta have go bags, and obviously, we're working on what goes in there, so, you know, we, we kinda know, but we're gonna really hone that down, because you gotta have information in there about, you know, when you go to that reunification point, wherever that might be, you gotta have a process down, you gotta have stuff in the go bag, so you gotta have, you know, kid names, people names, you gotta establish, and this comes in these roles and responsibilities, so my idea about go bags is to have go bags in several locations in the, in this, uh, on our campus, so.
You never have any each classroom?
Well, it depends on what you mean by go bag. Now, if you're talking about, if you're talking about a.
What you used to call a bucket.
We're gonna have buckets, we got that.
The buckets will stay with the bag and be something they grab and take with them.
Yeah, go bag is something, because there, there are, there's all kinds of things you gotta do, you know, that, it's gonna be perimeter form and we gotta get kids home, so, so, yeah, your, the go buckets are down.
We probably call it a jump bag, we probably call it a jump bag, yeah, first aid kit, different supplies, right, so you can grab and take with you and run for a trip.
Each teacher has, the, see, so we have different terminology that we're learning too, as we go through these trainings, what a go bag means for, for those purposes in an emergency situation, who's gonna run to get to our reunification point to start leading the charge and getting kids that their parents notified, making sure you have supplies in case someone gets hurt while you're getting kids there, um, there's certain pieces of that, so we have an actual list of how to form a, a proper go bag from our emergency services.
There's a lot of stuff on there.
There's a lot of there, so. We are putting those together and we do want to place them in different locations too, in case our person who's designated to grab a go bag and go, um, doesn't get there or whatever, so we have, we'll have them in locations, keep them updated, um, so that is something we're working on, every teacher does have their mini-go bag, I guess, it's, but we'll, I don't know which.
Individual shelter.
That in that has basic first aid, the rosters, well, the passes, the back room, those things that they can grab and they have to grab that for every drill, so that they can account for every student too, so we practice using those, um, and that is different from our buckets, which I wouldn't really call them a go bucket, it's more like a stay bucket.
Sheltering place.
So, sheltering place buckets, so we have those in every classroom too, in case you're sheltering in place where.
Feel ready to eat in a bucket, really.
All right.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Tupper.
Thought you heard us, Mr. Tupper.
All right, and finally, um, four point five is just a quick well check to go over where we are with the pandemic and what strategies we'll be using this year, there has been some new guidance, um, we are awaiting some, um, soon-to-be-released CDC guidance for schools, camps and, um, daycare facilities, that's supposed to be, it's supposed to be out two weeks ago, I think, so it's been delayed a little bit, uh, but BDH went ahead and pushed the button and pushed out their guidance anyway, um, getting ready for school, uh, so here's the one-year state data, we did have a meeting with our population health control manager just a week ago about this, they do see cases starting to plateau, especially in our region, which is a good thing, uh, there was a, a hiking cases locally here just the last couple, uh, few weeks ago, uh, so they said that seems to be, um, plateauing, they are seeing much less severe severity of cases and much less hospitalizations and deaths, which is what they did predict would happen as more vaccinations, more treatment options are available, um, and immunity, because people have had it, so, uh, they are seeing that, um, here is the, we still are using the CDC community transmission metrics to determine where we are as low, medium, and high, uh, for the community, uh, the most recent update from our health district was that cold pepper is in high community transmission right now, fakir is low, Madison orange and rappahannock are all in the medium range, and it changes, um, quite a bit at each time that they run these numbers, uh, so the new BDH guidance for schools is how are we gonna handle cases this year, um, you saw it in the spring of last year when we ended the school year, when the new guidance came out about masking and quarantines and things, a lot of schools went away from completely contact tracing and dashboarding and doing a lot of that, we didn't, we stayed strong throughout and kept that going, um, this year will look a little bit different based on new guidance and data, um, and we are using the new BDH guidance for schools chart to inform parents about how that would work, uh, basically, we still want positive cases reported to us, um, and we can help with testing as well, uh, so if, uh, you're experiencing symptoms, we would like to note, notify, we have a form on our parent website on how to do that, or you can contact the school nurse, and they will put you in our, in our system, they will ask you still some questions, we're not gonna do the, um, that contact tracing to the level we did before, but we will still continue our general exposure notice, in fact, we actually caught more cases doing that than just simple contact tracing, that seemed to work a lot better, because in a classroom setting, you don't know, you know, the six-foot rule, three-foot rule, sometimes it didn't matter if you, you know, walked by and grabbed Johnny's water bottle and said, no, look, back and sat fifteen feet away, so those types of things, so by doing the general exposure, we do catch, um, a little bit more in that, also, notify parents about, okay, there may be a case, I, I may make choices about where I want my child to sit or wear a mask or any of those things, so we wanna inform parents that way. Um, we are going to do the, um, dashboard like we did before, because everyone's using home testing kits and doing different things, so by the end of the year last year, we found it, you know, as accurate as we want it to be, we will still inform about community transmission rates, so you can make the best decision for, for your family, as well as we will try to make the best guidance for our, our staff and families as well. So, if a student tests positive, um, what we will do, send the general exposure to the class, to the bus, to the team, whoever may have been in a general exposure situation, um, just to tell parents, watch for symptoms, if symptoms come up and you receive the general exposure, we really encourage you to get a test to let us know, um, we have tests available in our health. Tonight at the elementary school and provided snacks and got to familiarize new families with Headwaters programs. After-school enrollment has been open since mid-July and there are forty-three kids enrolled already, and so it looks like enrollment will be full with sixty to seventy students again this year, and it will start in September. Headwaters is also gonna be running the read program along with after-school this fall, so beginning September sixth, it will have reading mentors provided to students, so it will focus on the second grade year, which is important for reading, um, and students who need support are gonna be identified by the staff and then referred to the program, and also have books available for children to take home and to build their own library at home, and they're in the process of recruiting and training reading mentors, there are twelve volunteers, but there is more space, they're like, they have many as twenty volunteers, so there's room for more community volunteers to step up, and they will find more information on the website or call, call the Headwaters office, Headwaters High School Plus program, it is, is something to, for students and their families to be aware of, it provides financial assistance to students pursuing workforce skills training, and it's open to students at the high school as well as those who have graduated within five years, so it's, it's, um, it's a generous age range and you can get a scholarship for workforce skills training, and we've had a lot of success with students doing that in the past, I just saw a note on our Facebook, one another one that got that, so that's exciting. Headwaters is also working with the public schools and, and rappahannock association, parts in the community, as well as totality martial arts in Sperryville and the, and CCLC, Childhood, Childhood Learning Center, to determine how they can best support students with summer programming coming in twenty twenty-three, they'll supplement summer school at the public school by providing enrichment opportunities after morning instruction occurs, and it will allow students to attend a day-long program and alleviate stress on local families, so continue to work during the summer, and that's just getting started, so, work on, and that's what I have.
Right, you go. Thank you, MBGS?
We, we, I mean, but we will have a meeting, we'll, we'll.
All right, uh, moving on, six dot one, uh, the, the annual convention, VFA conference is in, uh, mid-November, right? And, uh, so we need to start deciding if we're gonna enroll together, it's three hundred fifty bucks, first, nothing, three fifty?
Yes.
So, how many of us are planning on attending this year, we need to tell the department, we don't need to stay at the lodge this time, at least. We're next here? So, I'll plan on going, I don't know.
One day.
There's just one day, this process.
One day.
Are you doing one?
I'll be going, yeah.
One more time?
Sure, we go one more time.
Yeah.
We get up at 4:30.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Yeah. I'll go, yeah, Thursday, I won't go to 16, 17. So as I brought now everyone from Thursday.
Chris only goes to California.
He goes where the weather is nice.
$1,300, I mean.
It's, 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 it's 14, 1400 dollars.
We have a credit for that.
How much would that help you in the school?
Yep.
Well, I learned something last year that I was able to share at our kickoff. What do you call the kickoff? Combo.
Yeah. Combination.
Thanks. So the letter, everybody had a chance to read the letter.
Yes.
So did you have any comments about the letter? Our plan would be to vote to send the letter tonight as a motion. And make sure that if there were any changes that you would want to make. If you make those none, because we'll need to update the letter. I thought it read well.
I thought it read, I wonder, yeah.
I can read it.
Yeah.
It's a letter written from the school to Sean Polster, Emergency Services Coordinator, Dr. Polster. Thank you so much for your coordination with the Virginia Department of Emergency Management to facilitate one of our first inter-agency tabletop exercises to validate and evaluate our C P S crisis management plan with regards to an active shooter event. The exercise was incredibly valuable for those who were in attendance, and it certainly helped to strengthen our internal crisis protocols and documents. The importance of these types of exercises cannot be overemphasized, particularly in the wake of school shooting tragedies like the horrible incident in Uvalde, Texas. The complete systematic breakdown in communication and lack of collaborative practice exercises led to a tragic loss of life that may have been prevented had agencies worked together and reiterated the importance of school safety protocols with all school staff and emergency first responders at all levels. The school administration and school board strongly support continuation and expansion of these types of trainings and exercises, as well as more broad involvement with each of our emergency responding companies. We understand that B D Ms after action recommendations are to continue down this path, and we are strongly in support of helping coordinate with local and regional agencies to further strengthen our safety protocols and ability to respond quickly and appropriately. Again, we thank you for your support in beginning this process, and we urge you to continue to expand these types of trainings to include a broader reach of our first responder teams. Please let us know how we can assist in working toward a full scale simulation with all emergency personnel and those outlined in our crisis management plan. This kind of exercise would be invaluable for all parties. Thank you very much for all you do to keep our schools and our communities safe respectfully. It would be signed by Dr. Grizzly himself, a representative.
Yep.
It's a great letter.
It's a good letter, and I, I think if I were to add one sentence, I'd add one between, before, please let us know, just straightforwardly making the request that, that we would like to have a full scale simulation.
Are you?
Oh, I guess it says this would be invaluable.
Yeah, it says.
It says, yeah, so it implies that, it doesn't, it doesn't.
I was glad to see in two places that it includes our local V N S.
Yeah.
Fire and Rescue. I, I think that's what was left out of the original stuff from a broader perspective. I think there was some talk of, the first contact you made was to community for, for Culpeper and so forth, right?
Yeah, the tabletop?
Yeah, at the tabletop, that was the discussion.
If, if we needed help, if, if for our law enforcement, yeah. We'd reach out to state police, Culpeper, Falkir, surrounding agencies.
The D M S was in that same process.
There was a couple of people there for the D M S. But yeah, you, you, depending on the severity of an incident, you would need surrounding counties to come in.
Very well made, but I think the idea that local people in the training would be the initial place.
Yeah, I, I know that it was, it was supposedly put out to chiefs or to the association or whatever, but that might be something to work on. It's kind of off topic, but to work on in, in, in your field, in-house, to encourage that involvement because if, if we do that kind of drill, like you're going to need four, five, six, eight people from each place to show up and come in and get that full. It's, it's, it's a neat experience, but it's, it's several hours, it's a full day training kind of, kind of scenario, so with volunteers.
Well, I'm glad we put this out, because Sean was, Sean is looking for a reason, another reason to make this happen. And so this play.
Well, if we vote tonight to use this letter, it will be delivered tomorrow. Date it today, deliver it tomorrow, and you'll have.
Right.
Support.
That's a good idea.
You know, it might, I don't know if it could make any sense to.
I, I might be more, I, I just, I just don't feel like it's quite explicit or specific enough. Include, I would, I would say including local, but I mean, just in this last sentence. I mean, it doesn't, I mean, I, I just think that we should say, we, we think it would be valuable to have a full scale simulation, including our local emergency personnel. I think that's what we're really talking about, but it doesn't, it's not. It's implied but not explicit, and I don't know why we wouldn't.
Protocol wouldn't be to exclude them, it's just coordinating with, because all, all the local departments are volunteering. So if we do it on a Friday or a Tuesday, even on a Saturday sometimes, you have to get all those people away from their family, away from any, you know, supplement income, to show up and spend the day in the heat or the cold or whatever doing that. It's not that he would exclude them, but he means, it's just that.
Encourage.
We're encouraging him to set up this training and invite them in, which I'm sure he does, I know he does anyway, but with a big, with a broader, hey, come on, you know, kind of thing. So this might be a good catalyst for those departments to, to get excited and get involved too.
Yeah, and, and I do think that that's what we're talking about, so why don't we put in specifically including our local, I mean, is it, would it be something?
That's, that's who's going to be here regardless, anyway. Like they, they have, if, if they'll participate, they have to be a part of it.
Because maybe, maybe we're the priority towards.
We, we wouldn't call. We, we, we wouldn't call Madison over Sperryville. But Sperryville has to be willing to call.
Says all, but, but it's, is that, is that, is that all you feel that?
Well, I think there might have been a little bit of a misinterpretation of what that particular tabletop was designed to do and why that one was called. And I think people just got a little, there was just some miscommunication about that, I think. Because that tabletop was specifically designed with the people that B Dem selected to be there in order to test a certain protocol. It wasn't to exclude anybody. It was based on your plan and based on these people, these are the ones we need to come, and those are who need. We didn't coordinate all that, that goes through B Dem, a third party who tests these things. But then they do say, right after that, we need to involve everyone on our simulation, I want you to. So that was next anyway, but I think people didn't understand what that, the purpose of it was. Yeah.
Yeah, the evaluation had, had both, and it wasn't clear as to where, whether it was going to be mutual aid or local. Did you read the evaluation?
I haven't got a chance to.
Well, it just literally came out this morning. The after, the after action report, there was a draft one that went out for some feedback, but the after action just came out this morning. So we haven't had a chance to debrief on that either. But that one was a very, very specific scenario with a very specific group of. So that's why it was spec, specific. When we do a full scale simulation, that's going to be everything. And that's something that, yeah, so that was not any intentionality on anyone's part to just disinclude anybody. It was a very specific scenario designed to test one thing based on those who are outlined in that process by B Dem. So it was not anyone.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I hope that's.
So yeah, so we don't need to specifically say including local, especially.
So then we'll vote on this, on that's top direction.
Well done.
The next thing was the resolution Captain Brown, who recently passed. And this resolution was, the, the plan is to, to discuss and vote tonight regarding the resolution as it's presented. And then next month to present it to Captain Brown's family at our regular board meeting. At which time, I think then will be, that's when we want to read the resolution at that point and out loud, and, and present it to the family framed. Do you have any comments about the resolution content or any changes to make to it?
No, I thought it read really well. You might want to write comments.
Great.
I don't know.
Great. All right, we'll be, we'll be voting on that resolution as well.
I'm sure she sees enough news there.
Maybe what I was remembering was I, I got to come to several senior meetings at where after the food was eaten, we would go into the, the auditorium and, and Captain Brown would show the slideshow. It was a slideshow. But it was pictures of these young people when they were in first and second grade and pictures of them now. And he'd been collecting these things for years to put this together, and they loved it. It meant so much to them, and he invested so much time and energy in the students, and.
They were true to themselves.
He was dear to them for many years, many years. Okay, public comment, is there anyone like to address some work this evening? Lost our crowd.
Any online?
Anybody online?
Just Ben Peers, then you have anything to say to the board?
Yes, online.
Okay. We see you there, okay. That'd be awesome.
All right, all right, moving on, moving on to action items. Is there a motion to approve the gift and talented local plan?
So.
We have a motion from Sabine Zerzak, second, second for Mr. Grove, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, votes no? It's ordered, is there a motion to approve the E M S letter?
Sure.
Or motion for Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Uben, any discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye, and a votes no? It's ordered, and is there a motion to approve the resolution for Captain Jim Brown?
So move.
We have a motion, Mr. Uben, is there a second?
Aye.
Second for Mr. Grove, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, votes no? It's ordered. Is there any new business this evening? Is there any requests for future agenda items anybody would like to present?
I would like for us to talk about or think about providing for a three, four, five year old Montessori program.
Can you say that again?
Yeah, we'd like for us to think about, talk about, providing a three year old, three year, four year old, five year old Montessori program, a certified Montessori for preschool days. My experience has been, do you have a three and four year old program that is tuition based? Have a five year old program that's basically kindergarten and Montessori, and they're all together, all in one class.
So since I don't know what that is, I'm going to have to go research that too.
I mean, I'd be glad to talk about it, or Karen has great knowledge of this stuff.
So we're probably not ready to have it on the agenda.
Well, no, well, it could be on the agenda to discuss.
To discuss.
Yeah.
All right, well, if we can.
Needs another month, they take another month.
I need another month.
Yeah.
Oh, wait a minute, let's not do it next week, because I'm not going to be here.
Yeah.
Let's do it in two months.
Something in October.
Two months.
We're just going to discuss.
Because I'm not going to be here in September.
Yeah, so for example, we are going to need to discuss what would be the cost of something like that.
And also board consensus on what that, what it is, and what is the value, does it align with the plan? Just a lot of discussion around that and what, what would it do, so yeah.
Does it, does it work alongside of other things that we, in the county that we already have? So a lot to research. So if we're prepared to talk about it in October, will that add to the agenda? Not much, it's out.
In October.
Try to do October, if you can.
The other thing is just, we've been talking, we've been mentioning solar and how we will have, maybe next month we'll have more of an idea of what the infrastructure build looks like, which exists now, which didn't exist before. And I, it would be good to think about locally based companies and get a list of how we will, if we can figure out a list of how we'll proceed with that. And, and, and with an understanding of what's in that bill, and it's not a law yet, so it would change something. Be interesting to, just keep that on the.
And with the new context that you all outlined last month was very helpful to Dr. Bolt, so it revamped sort of her, her way of thinking about going about this. The approach, at least starting, but the infrastructure build's a major player there.
Yeah, that, that was an unknown.
So we're watching all those pieces, but that reframing gives her a smaller, you know, bite sized piece to, to work toward, to integrate. And then she, so she has a plan for that, we'll bring that back to you.